Next item, please.
Commendations. We have Rima Saad and Hassan Hamud, two seniors from Fortson High School, reading our commendations. I had a chance to talk to them before we sat down and they secured some very good schools for next fall, but they're even a little bit higher, so best of luck to both of you.
Good evening Superintendent, Board members, and community members. I would like to start off by saying my name is Rima Saad and I'm a proud, actually a very proud representative of Fortson High School.
Hello, Board, evening, community, good evening, Board and community members. I'm also a proud representative of Fortson High School, a tractor. My name is Hassan Hamud and I'm a senior here. And we're going to be reading the commendations. They're really short and sweet, less than half a page, so we'll just get right into it.
So, for the high schools, commendations for Fortson High School students, including Hassan Hamud, Sarah Kadumi, Hadi Nasr Dean, and Ali Hamadi, who are all selected for scholarships from the police officer, charity, and Dearborn burn drive. The students admitted as states before the Battle of the Badges softball game in September. Sarah Kadumi was also selected to sing the National Anthem before the game.
We'd also like to give commendations to Fatima Abdurrahman from Metzal Ford High School. She received the 2018 Governor's Service Award from the Michigan Community Service Commission for her poster encouraging students to volunteer. And that's actually all the commendations we have for tonight, so we feel really honored to say these. Thank you, guys.
That's, that's, thanks you guys.
For being in the beginning of the school year.
Rima is actually very efficient.
She's related to Judge Marion Bazey, who served on this board, so as you can tell, she gets straight to the point.
Yeah, she's in charge.
Yes.
Pro long things.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I can just mention, too, appreciate the great work they both did. Thank you for representing Fortson in the district. I just also want a commendation to Hassan. He's a National AP Scholar. It requires, yes. It requires a student to pass eight AP exams with a score of four or five. Hassan has taken and passed ten exams. He's currently enrolled in five AP classes, working towards becoming an AP State Scholar. The award is granted to one male and one female student in each US state with scores of three or higher on the greatest number of AP exams, and then the highest average score, at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken. So, you know, congratulations to him and to both of them, so.
So, a question for you. If you've had that many AP courses, don't leave, don't leave. If you've had that many AP courses, how many college credits do you think you will amass at the next institution?
Um, the current institution, Ann Arbor said there would say about eighty?
Eighty?
Actually, including Henry Ford credits, it's eighty without the speed law system.
Wonderful. That's what is wonderful. Good for you.
I got a last little thank you.
Yeah, go.
Thank you.
Next item?
Acknowledgement of donations.
We have Ms. Faraj, who's going to come back on.
A donation of one thousand five hundred has been offered to Metzal Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Project Lead the Way registration. A donation of three thousand dollars has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for music cultural exchange. A donation of two hundred and fifty has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for non-fiction books. A donation of sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for headphone storage. A donation of one hundred and fifteen dollars, fifty-two cents has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for learning reference. A donation of ninety-six dollars has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for vocabulary. A donation of two hundred and sixty dollars has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a speaker system. A donation of hundred backpacks filled with school supplies has been offered to Salina Elementary by Mr. Ahmad Al Zayat to be distributed to the students at Salina Elementary School. A donation of four hundred and twenty backpacks filled with school supplies has been offered to Salina Elementary by Henry Ford Village to be distributed to the students at Salina Elementary. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Salina Elementary by Henry Ford Village to be used for additional instructional materials. A donation of five hundred dollars and five hundred Scholastic Book Club bonus points has been offered to Fortson High School by Scholastic Book Clubs to be used for, to be used to improve Ms. Lowe's classroom library. A donation of seven hundred dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for PVIS at Salina Intermediate, that's Positive Behavior Intervention Support. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Salina Elementary by Amel Bannick to be used for library books and headphones. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Alexander Shashko, Alexander Shashko, to be used in the arts and music programs at Salina Intermediate. A donation of three thousand pounds of flat steel has been offered to Fortson High School by Target Steel Inc. to be used in the welding one and two classes. A donation of a violin has been offered to Dearborn Schools by the Dearborn Exchange Club to be used in the music department. A donation of over hundred backpacks filled with school supplies has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Jack Dummer Automotive Group to be distributed to the elementary students throughout the district. A grant of six thousand one hundred has been offered to Dearborn High School by Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs to be used in the music program at Dearborn High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
I just want to add to the number fourteen, the donation of one thousand dollars offered to Salina Intermediate by Alexander Shashko. That's Mr. Alex Shashko, retired Dearborn Public School teacher, longtime at Fortson.
He's still number one at DFT, and he comes every month to my meetings.
He's non-stop. God bless him.
He is, he's determined, so.
Uh, next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by seven ten PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or support questions. For the benefits of all concern, please do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. I do not have any agenda items, cards for agenda items, but I do have one for non-agenda. I believe it's non-agenda, it is non-agenda. Ms. Amani Nasr of Dearborn, representing Fortson High School, would like to speak to us regarding standard-based grading.
Um, hi, my name is Amani Nasr, and I would like to discuss a controversial topic that I believe hasn't been addressed yet. Recently, I noticed that my school, Fortson High School, has been enforcing a grading system that me and many of my peers find unfair. Standard-based grading is a system that is trying to replace the traditional grading system that has been in place with students all over the world since the twentieth century. Standard-based grading grades students on a scale of one through four, indicating student proficiency. This grading system also doesn't count homework completion and classroom participation. How can finishing assignments and taking part in classroom dialogue not play a role in the educational experience of student grades? To add on, this system has not, has not been tested with results that support student improvement. This system is flawed and ultimately punishes hard-working students. It's hurting and penalizing hard-working students who are, who are supposed to represent Fortson. There are students who work hard outside of school on their homework and serve as leaders while in the classroom, but with standard-based grading, these students could, these students could potentially get the same grades as students who never even pick up a pencil outside of the classroom. Um, I am a hard-working student who knows how to work from the bottom up. I know what it means to work, to work hard for the grade I deserve. When a challenge comes my way, I'm always up for it. However, this grading system doesn't give students a chance to work hard and improve. I'm experiencing the standard-based grading system now in my geometry class, and for the first time in my life, I feel helpless. I feel as if I have no control over my grade, and I refuse to sit down, I refuse to sit down and just deal with it. Students need to have a voice in the way we are graded. Anyways, it's, it's students who will be affected the most by the system in the long run. I also realize that students who will be affected the most by the, I also notice that some classes of the same subject do standard-based grading while other classes follow the traditional grading system, which is unfair because it gives some students more advantages than others. This system reinforces the idea that a student is defined by a test, which is unfair. I believe that a student doesn't reinforce, a student doesn't, I believe that a test doesn't define you. It's your hard work and effort that, that determines your success. Also, there's so much more to teaching and learning than assessments, and teachers should look beyond a student's capability to perform on a test. Albert Einstein once said, "Everybody is a genius, but if, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing it is stupid." Moreover, traditional grading shows us our percentages, and it eventually shows students and parents if their grades are improving. Colleges aren't focused on how well I improved from a quiz to a test. They're focused on how well I did in the class overall. In the traditional grading system, in the traditional grading system, rubrics are qualitively defined, which help prevent bias, whereas in standard-based grading, rubrics are more qualitative and tend to promote bias. In order to receive a hundred percent under standard-based grading, a student, a student must exceed the expectation of key word, the teacher's grading, as opposed to the traditional grading system in which the presence of all correct answers earn a hundred percent and exceeding a teacher's expectation is not a part of the grading process. Therefore, the traditional grading system is true grading. Standard-based grading rubrics often does not include any numbers, so students have to predict what the teacher's expectations are and exceed them, whereas traditional, traditional grading rubrics are less ambiguous and are easier to understand. Also, if homework and classwork aren't being counted for as, for as students, students won't do it, and then, and it'll lead to lower test scores, and according to standard-based grading, students can't retake unless the homework and classwork is completed. Therefore, less students will be eligible to take retakes. Standard-based grading teaches students to depend on retakes, but how is that teaching students' life skills if colleges and future jobs barely give people second chances? Last, I would like to add that how can a system be enforced if the community hasn't even been educated about it? Students and parents may look at the standard-based grading skill of one through four like it's A through E, which is completely different. Now, you might all be thinking, how can a sixteen-year-old girl come up with a solution to an issue like this? I've decided that I have the right to propose a petition that will help show the community that majority of parents and students don't agree with standard-based grading and that it shouldn't be a part of Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
You can tell what a hard worker the student is, just for coming up here and giving us a different perspective, right, or your perspective as to what's going on. I truly appreciate that. I know that we're all, we all listen to this. I think that she did bring up some concerns that, that would be concerning to me. I'd like to explore this further. And we know we can reach out to you for suggestions.
Yeah, I'm determined to talk about anything about this topic because I feel like it's really having an effect on my education and my peers' education.
And I'm sorry you're having trouble in your classroom. I know that hopefully you're not going to stop there. You're going to keep pursuing even with what you have.
Yeah, I'm going to continue to work hard because I'm experiencing this right now in my math class, and I love math, and I, and I, and I look forward to working with math and science in my future. And if my grade is being affected now by it, even though I'm having, I'm not struggling with math, but my grade is, and it makes no sense because I've never received anything lower than a high A in math all my life. Now with this new grading system, it's like it's changing completely.
Well, thank you.
Just see, Lee?
Well, I kind of, I understand the frustration because I feel that we, as a school district, have the same issue. The state wants to put a label on us and a grade on us, and for many years now, they've been debating, do they, how do they judge us? Do they give us a letter A through F? So, yeah, we all know, it's, it's a great philosophical debate. And as a matter of fact, the Dearborn Federation of Teachers sued us a few years ago on grading philosophy, so I can tell you, because we had exactly this question. So, if we have a student like you who's hardworking, who really works hard for an AP class, and then someone else who doesn't do any work, doesn't even show up, and they pass the test.
And that's what I'm realizing in my class right now.
Yeah, so, you know, what, what do we do with that? We, as a Board, wanted to say that their grade should be increased, but the DFT actually won that grievance against us. So, it's a difficult issue. I would say to you this, if you're learning, you work hard, and hard work is always going to be rewarded, probably more even than Albert Einstein's brilliance, because really, life is about who shows up. And your, your hard work will pay off in the end, yes, because you've showed up here, and we're all really impressed with your, I am anyways, with your.
Because I'm sitting in a class, and I see students just dealing with it, and they're just taking that grade. It's like, you don't deserve that grade. You don't have to sit here and take that. You know what I mean?
Yes, I do. And, and on the flip side, you have people that aren't doing anything, and they're not getting anything, but maybe they passed the test.
Yeah, and then there's another thing I added is that, um, I'm in, if I'm taking geometry right now, there'd be, there's another geometry class that will do traditional grading system while my class is doing standard-based grading system, which is not fair. It's not equalizing students. It's giving them more advantages than people, than students in my class, which I don't find fair at all.
Well, we'll take this. Mr. Patterson's actually here, and the Board may recall that we actually had some teachers from Metzal that came and presented on this system, that we were, some, we haven't, you know, mandated anything across the district, other than that we were moving in that direction based on a lot of the recommendations of the committee, but we'll take your input, and I'll also encourage, you know, maybe some conversations. Maybe some of the things can be worked out locally, too, with the principal. So, I'll encourage her to, to reach out to you, or you reach out to her as well.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee meeting, September tenth, 2018, Board Report eighteen dash thirty-three, and regular P through twelve meetings, September tenth, 2018, Board Report eighteen dash thirty-four. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes. Support?
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of these minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes unanimous. Next item, please.
Special reports. Our first special report is transportation, bus drivers.
I'm going to have Mr. Andrews, Ms. Bankhead, and Mr. Rango come up. This is part of a Board request. Both of these presentations will be, actually.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Malenko. We have three individuals here, and I think I have a small part at the very end, that there was a request for an update on transportation. So, with that, I'll turn over to, who's going first? Ruth Bankhead to start the discussion.
Before I do start, I just want to go back to Title Nine, just so you're aware, the non-instructional special ed has it in their PD on Friday, and so do the other non-instructional groups. We've encouraged it. So, we are on board again with the teachers as far as getting that taken care of. So, as a background to transportation, funding reductions were made in 2009. Through no one's fault, the state drastically cut the money that was given to districts, and because of that, and the retirement plan changes in 2012, we began to experience challenges in recruiting and retaining drivers. A consulting firm was brought in to make suggestions on where the district could save money, and one of the suggestions was to eliminate bus routes, along with some full-time drivers. So, with the elimination of routes, reductions in salaries over the years, changes to the retirement plan, it's resulted in us having to go out and try to find drivers who are now going into paying positions in the private sector. So, in 2008, 2009 school year, that was prior to this consultant coming in, we had twenty-one full-time drivers, fifteen twelve-month, seven ten-month, fifty-nine ten-month part-drive, part-time drivers, with a total of eighty total bus routes. Two years after the consultant came in, we had eight full-time drivers, five of them twelve months, three of them ten months, and sixty-five ten-month part-time drivers, for a total of seventy-three bus routes. So, you can see the reduction in the routes that we had.
So, talking about some of the challenges that we have with recruitment, we've talked about this before, but it's worth mentioning that to be a good candidate, you have to have a clean personal driving record, criminal history record, and you also have to be able to annually pass drug and alcohol, and a DOT physical, which, back in 2016, the Federal Motor Carrier, they got involved, they streamlined it across the country, they brought the standards up to, to give an example of how much harder it is. It's more on the, the same basis of what our airplane passenger pilots have to pass. So, not only with that, something new that we're facing with the improved economy is our competition with other employers in the labor market. So, one of them, just recently, that was announced with Amazon, they just announced that they're going to start their, their employees off at fifteen dollars an hour. So, not only do we have outside employers, we also have some competition inside the district, since, as, we'll get into a little bit further, most of our drivers, about two-thirds of our bus routes are part-time. So, we're finding drivers can find full-time employment in, in a district with, just for some examples, with the grounds department, with our building engineers, which I think we might have talked about in previous Board meetings, possibly about how there's a shortage there. So, just some internal positions that can offer full-time work for our drivers. One thing I'd also like to point out here that I personally think is pretty important, that is a challenge for recruiting, is that we ask our drivers to be available for eleven hours out of the day, but they're really only on the clock, most of them, for maybe six, six and a half hours out of that time. So, when you look at the average salary, the average hours that our drivers work, they're only really making, and let me point out, this is before deductions are taken out. They're only making about a hundred and thirty dollars a day, about six hundred and fifty dollars a week, and over a ten-month period, only about twenty-three thousand dollars for the year. Nope. Uh, it's got skipped. I don't think this thing is mine, but I can talk about it. Who's doing recruit?
That's mine.
All right.
I get to talk a little bit about recruiting practices for the district. Currently, we go to job fairs. I'm not, I'm not saying that everything that we do is enough just yet. We're going to talk about a couple of things right after this, but right now, we go to job fairs. We also advertise on Indeed and other forms of social media. We try to get the word out. I know Mark probably passes out tons and tons of business cards to try to generate interest. I think one of the strongest areas we have, just like any other business organization, is word of mouth. I think the more that we can talk to our, our local community, and the more that we can get the word out that we need local drivers, we're going to, we're going to do very, we do well, or do better. The last piece, though, the, one of the things that we've increased is the number of full-time positions, which actually helps quite a bit, that people know they can come in and get a full-time job, but it's frankly not quite enough. Thinking outside the box, some of these new recruiting ideas are done by similar districts, some ideas that we've had internally. Some of them aren't really outside the box. They're just our good common sense. Some of them, we're getting ready to begin, and some of them, we need to go to Tom and some others for approval that require some funding. Ordering banners to be placed strategically throughout the district. You may have seen some banners in other districts near the football field, or, or in, in areas where there's a lot of congregation of, of local community members. Markeys. Most of our schools have electronic marquees. I think that's a good place to start putting a phone number, or that we're hiring bus drivers, trying to just, people pass by. Another idea would be to hire bus attendants at part-time, and with the idea they could be trained as bus drivers. This is one that we would need some support on, but we currently don't do it, but it might have some, some legs. Bonus to drivers who refer applicants if the referral is hired. A lot of organizations do that sort of thing. Reimbursed for CDL tests, pay them for their, for their time and effort for taking the test. We recently met with an outside recruitment firm. There are firms out there that don't just do bus drivers, but they do all kinds of different recruiting for us, and, and we're exploring that opportunity. A small idea that, that I think we could do are yard signs. So, you can see that the marketing of the district is really the critical piece, and the more that we do, and the better we do, I think we're going to be able to help a little bit with getting more drivers that are interested. There's one more challenge, too, that Mark didn't point out, and that is, we have a lot of competition from surrounding communities as well as companies. Those folks are having as much trouble as we are hiring drivers, and in many cases, they could be taking some of our drivers. We don't know that for a fact, but it's something we have to keep in mind.
I have social media, I'm sorry. I didn't see that on.
It, it, we do that now.
It is on social media.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
All right. I'm going to come back up here and talk about a little bit currently what's, how we look like with routes. So, currently, each route that Trinity does for us, on average, because it depends how many days are in a month of the school year, or I'm sorry, for that school month, but it averages about sixty-six, sixty-six thousand dollars a year. So, last year to this year, in our whole, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our partnership with Trinity has been over twenty years. Last year to this year, it was an unprecedented amount of routes that we had to give to Trinity. And half of that was partly due to the loss of drivers. We lost about four to five drivers to retirement, and a couple due to some medical issues. And the other part was an increase, as we've all talked about, not just in our school buildings, but now with the increase in student enrollment, it affects how many routes we have to do as well, every day, to move those students around. And what comes with that is also some new programs and some new school buildings. So, all that combined created, means that we had to give, do more routes, and since we didn't have the drivers, we had to ask Trinity to help out, help us out a little bit more than we have in the past years. So, in my department, we, we would like to try to have enough drivers to cover twenty percent of our staff to call off. Right now, with the drivers I have, sub-drivers that is, we're only about ten to fifteen percent. So, what happens when we have staff that call off over that, that's when we start looking at having Trinity do some athletic trips for us, doubling up routes. That way, we, we build routes together. So, a driver that might have been doing athletic trip, they maybe can do a high school and middle school, and then we use another driver that can maybe do the, the elementary portion of that route. Just to give an idea, it's pretty complicated, so I don't want to get in too much detail, but that's, that's what we try to do when, when we're past that threshold of, of having enough sub-drivers to cover our, our call-offs. So, looking at the routes that Trinity does for us, they're currently at twenty-three routes for us. So, that's an increase from fifteen last year to twenty-three this year. And we're currently short five drivers just to get us up to that twenty percent threshold that I spoke about. So, real quick, this right here just goes back to the thirteen fourteen school year, and how much we've contractually have on our books with Trinity to cover the routes that they do for us. So, as you can see, last year was a big increase, but over the last five years, it's increased a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. And then this one, just to make a little bit of sense for you, that top row there, that's going back again to the same timeframe from the thirteen fourteen school year. That top row there, that's our total number of bus routes. That's in-house and Trinity combined. That next row down, that gives you an idea of how many routes Trinity has done for us over the year. So, back in thirteen fourteen, they only had eleven, and this year, they have twenty-three, as I just mentioned. And the only thing I'd like to point out there is, as I think Mike pointed out, we have been trying since thirteen fourteen to increase the number of full-time bus routes that we have in-house.
So, as you can see over the years, we get partial funding for just the special ed part of transportation. We get no additional funding from the general fund portion, except what the general fund supplies for that program. If you remember, Dr. Malenko and I did adequacy funding before, and even when they looked at it across the board, they couldn't even put that numbers into it because it's so specific for every district. A district way up north might have, you know, a hundred mile square area, and so transportation is very costly for them. Even us, in such a small district, since we're such, so many kids, it's a high cost factor for us. So, this kind of gives you just a, kind of a snapshot of where the money comes from. So, it comes from the state, and it comes from Act eighteen, where we actually get for special ed for local villages, and we actually provide transportation for District Seven, because they're such a small district, to have a, a transportation program by themselves would be very costly. And we get a little bit of portion from grants, but otherwise, most of the money is for special education, very little for general education. And the last one, just showing you some of the numbers. So, you know, having actual buses is a high capital outlay cost for a district, for any district, and so, over the years, instead of replacing all the buses, we had to do it all in-house. Slowly over time, we, we replace less buses, so it helps us on our general operating budget overall. We would love to bring this whole project into the program, into the house, but just like everybody else in this area, bus drivers are a shortage. And when you add more buses, you have to also add mechanics, because it's usually a ratio of one to twenty, so one mechanic for every twenty buses. So, if we actually try to expand the program, bring the drivers in, it is a higher-cost project, but overall, it's still, we'd rather have the program in-house. There's greater control of what we do, how the buses are done. We've had some recent issues.
We've had some recent issues that has come to the board of attention about Trinity and how they operate. We don't control that because we actually, that is part of another company, so we can't control as much. Obviously, they still work for us, but the control is not there. We'd rather have the control in the district. I think that's the end of the presentation, so any questions?
Trustee, let's call.
Okay. I'm going to refer back to slide nine with the bus routes. And I was on the board when we made all these cuts in two thousand and eight, in two thousand. So I remember doing it then, and it wasn't a happy day for us, trust me. And we were making cuts everywhere, though. But I'm looking here. I'm still kind of confused. Because in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, when we only had eleven Trinity routes, which have now more than doubled to this year, we had sixty-two of our own routes, which have dropped down consistently every year. Now we're not down to fifty-six. Is that strictly because of hiring issues?
Combination. Over the last few years, the student enrollment has increased. So a lot of it with our special ed department, too. That's where I noticed a little bit more, is with how many routes we've had to do with our increased special education program. For example, what comes with that is also some new programs. So from last year to this year, there was a few more schools added. We now are transporting to William Ford, and there's another school that we just started transporting to last year. I forget which one, but we, remember, a couple of years ago, we started transporting to MSD up in Flint. So any time that we add a new program, a new building like that, with the shortage of drivers, the combination of them, that combined is, you know, is a reason why we look for Trinity for more help.
But our routes themselves have dropped by six from two thousand thirteen to twenty, provided by Dearborn Schools, you know, that, that's, I'm assuming, you know, I'm, I'm.
Well, if you look at the total number at the top row, and that's why this slide is a little confusing, even though that our routes that we do in-house has dropped, you look at the top row, that's the total of routes that combined Trinity and us do, so that has increased over the years.
Right, but it seems like we're relying much more heavily on Trinity than we are on our, our own. Ours have continued to decline, and that's where I'm at. So, so is it a combination of we don't have the buses, the number of buses, or we don't have the drivers? Because I'd like to substitute out the Trinity, you know, quite frankly, unfortunately, we just heard about an accident today. That was a Trinity driver.
Right, out of Detroit.
Uh, in the east side of Detroit. I don't want to have to rely on an outside company. I've had issues personally with Trinity buses on my own block that I've called in the past because of their employees. I worry about that. I know that the Trinity on the west side, I live right there, where their, where one of their bus stations is. They had dozens of lawn signs along Greenfield.
Yeah.
Advertising for employees, so I'm sure they're struggling just as equally as we are. But what I don't get is why we're not doing better in our ability to supplement our routes as opposed to relying upon Trinity to fill that in at this juncture? Because we've dropped down six routes, we've increased theirs by twelve from the same period. Somehow, this just doesn't seem to be adding up in our ability to capture.
Recruit?
Right.
You, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. It comes down to drivers. We, for a long time, we tried to hold enough buses to do, to bring everything back, but you can only do that for, for so long, because it, it, there's a burden in, in just maintaining those buses with our budget. So at this point, we've reached, we've reached a point where not only would we have to hire more drivers, we would have to purchase more buses.
That's why I'm asking. So it's a combination of.
It's a combination.
Of needing both. But then has our philosophy changed? We're just going to rely upon an outside company then to take over?
We did with the last contract with the DFSE, we did increase bus driver wage. We also were able to get in the contract the ability to have, I believe, ten people for this school year, start at something higher than that starting step wage. And so with our new recruitment, we are hoping that we're going to be able to go out and, and get people who are, who are quality drivers and have been driving for a while and bring them into the district at that higher rate of pay.
So is Trinity competitive in pay scale, or, or is it just going to other districts that are more competitive?
It's a hard answer, or it's a hard question to answer, because Trinity's, they're not unionized, so they don't have a contract.
Right.
So when a driver comes to them, they have an easier ability, even though we changed some language a little bit, but they have an easier, if a driver comes with experience, they could start them off.
They can make a deal.
Exactly. One thing that I'd like to point out, though, that Trinity does and other contractors that we don't, and I tried to sell this when I interviewed, is their extra hours. So anything like athletic trips, field trips, that's considered extra hours in our, in our business. They do it, they can just give to whoever they want. So if they think a driver is better than the other one, they'll keep feeding that driver. Where we, we, it's, I don't want to get in too much detail, but it's the fairest way you can do it. We have a charge sheet, and everybody, basically what it does, it gives every employee equal opportunity to do the extra hours.
They also can do signing bonuses. If you look at those advert, yeah, if you look at those advertisements, right.
But from everybody that I've talked to in the industry across the state, the signing bonuses, as far as recruiting a new driver, hasn't been really that successful. But Mike touched on something that, that I've been gathering that is successful and has given a bonus to our own employees who go out there and recruit new, new employees, not just in drivers, this could be across the board with other open positions.
Well, I, I just am concerned about the quality comparison, and since we're especially hearing more and more issues with Trinity, and I don't know if there's another contractor nearby that we could, you know, if they're the only game in town.
They're not, but, but what you'll find is, is they're all in competition, as Mike mentioned, about in, or surrounding us. A lot of what these contractors are doing is with the signing bonuses, the reason why it wasn't that efficient is because the driver would go to Trinity, get the bonus. If they have to stay six months, let's say, get the bonus, and then ABC offers a bonus, so then they go over there. I mean, I'll be honest, I'd be doing it, too, if I was them. Trustee, answer.
When they are full-time, are they hitting a high school, then a middle school, then an elementary school?
Possibly. We have, the, the hard thing about creating a full-time route is you don't want to do it just to make it a full-time. You want to have work there for them. You don't want to have excessive downtime for them on the clock without working. So actually, most of our routes that do the regular three-tier system, those are going to be mainly our six, six and a half hour routes. Our ones that are full-time are the ones that have mid-days, where they transport special ed students that are on half-days. A lot of our shuttles that we transport between the Berry Center and the college, those are where a lot of our full-time routes, because it's during the midday portion. Trustee, Lane.
Is it, is bus driving pretty much a unique skill set that, and, and interest set that the people don't want to do other jobs? Because we do have other openings, and we, we're always looking for new now, or supervisors.
In my opinion, absolutely. I, I consider it a skilled trade.
Okay. And, and they don't want the other employment that we have generally? They want to do driving only?
Yeah, I would, I would say you're accurate with that. I mean, even though we do have some routes, to go back to answer your question, for full-time, I'm using some department lingo, we call them truckers, where they, they take their students to school, they come back, they partner up, and they go out and they move desks, books, things around the district. And then we have our food runs, where they come back, partner up, and they go to a, a middle school, and they move the, the goods to elementary schools that they need to get through for the next week or two. But if you were to ask them, they would much rather be driving that whole time.
I think I've asked this before at, at a prior presentation, forgive me for not remembering. I, I think most of our, you have statistics on, on how filled most of our buses are?
Could you repeat the how?
So are, most of the time, are our buses near capacity, or are they pretty much empty? With students, yeah, with, with bodies in them.
We just wrapped up, our last week was the state mandated count week. Regular ed was just on Wednesday, special ed was all week. I looked at a lot of those numbers this week, or I'm sorry, this morning. I'm still waiting for a couple to trickle in. We're actually, we, we have a couple buses that are near capacity, but we're doing better this year than we did last year.
So what, what is usage, generally speaking? Is it at seventy percent of capacity or above?
Well, I can put it in this terms. I haven't figured out the percentage like that, but we can hold seventy-eight students.
Right.
I would say on average, our middle school is in the fifties, and I would say our high schools, on average, are maybe sixty-two, to give you an idea, with that number.
Sixty-two students rather than sixty-two percent.
Right, right.
Uh, and, and that's not talking about special ed. Do we have a lot of buses that run for special ed and have just a few students? Or are they at capacity also?
Correct.
Because to me, I, I'm always frustrated when I see a seventy-two man bus and I see two kindergartners on it.
But I, but I would like to point out, according to the law, those are the students that by law we have to transport, not our regular ed students.
Yeah, and, and special ed, and I know we have some other requirements. I, I know over at Snow School, when, when they lived across Palomino.
You're absolutely right.
Two, two kindergartners over there that had to ride the bus together.
Even though, I would say, one of our fuller special ed buses probably has only twenty-three, twenty-four students. On average, we're probably twelve, thirteen, fourteen students on a special ed bus.
And, and I think I've asked this before, there's no way to, it's not economical to buy a smaller size bus and use that on runs, just because of the way you stack up runs?
Yeah, it's a great question. And this is just my opinion and my predecessor's opinion and other people in the industry around, around me. Right now, the drivers are, are what, are golden. You know, to buy a smaller bus, you could save a little bit of money in the initial purchase price, but to maintain that bus is going to be the same throughout the life of it. So if I'm gonna, if I have a hard time buying, getting a driver, once I have a driver, I'm going to want to transport as many students as I can with that bus. Anybody else? Trustee Barry?
Before we get into the report, which was a eye-opener for me, just want to follow up on what trustee, what direction trustee Lane was going. Yes, they would rather be bus drivers, but when it comes to, you know, money, they need to make the money. Do we offer? Are we, are we talking to them? If there's other jobs, other responsibilities they can take on the district, are we making that offer to them?
Gee, thanks.
So that has been a discussion item, perhaps taking bus drivers who go in the morning, go punch out, come back in the afternoon, punch out, come back in the evening, and seeing if they can do something like food service or custodial. We're, we're looking at all of that because, you know, if they're working in a, maybe a special ed assignment or as a custodian and they get hurt, then we've not only lost them as a custodian, but we've lost them as a driver, and so liability in that capacity as well. But we have been looking at that, and we'll continue to look, to see if we can give them other things to do, the ones that aren't full-time.
Yeah, unless there's huge problems with that, I, you know, I would like to see that happen. If I was bus driver and I'm going to make myself available for ten to eleven hours, and I'm only going to get paid for five and a half hours, no, I'd rather go a different direction.
Right. I can tell you that they are allowed to bid on summer work and work during the summer.
Sure.
Doing all kinds of things. The people who bid on summer work in the last five years has reduced dramatically, where we don't even have enough people to fill summer work assignments for custodians and parapros and things like that. So that is an opportunity for them to get more money, work in the summer, but that's decreased as well.
If I had a morning shift, if I would make myself available for morning shift, and I was able to pick up two, three hours between late morning, early afternoon, within the district, I can go on and take a second job, I mean, that's just, that's reality.
Right.
I'm part of a business that when a, when a, an employee comes and says wants a raise, because she's not getting enough hours, they said, what if you cross-train to some of the other departments? And I explain to her or him what I'm talking about, and they buy into it. All of a sudden, now, instead of working for, you know, four or five hours a day, they can get in there eight hours or seven hours, what have you, so.
Right. We just have to make sure we're not interfering with the driving part of it, but we are looking at that.
Sure, sure. Okay, to the report. Little bit of history, student population shifts in the seventies and eighties caused us to close schools, okay? Then the shift started happening the other way. Now we've got to get the students from one side of town to the other. You know, we lost. I mean, we talk about neighborhood schools, we can talk about it all we want, but reality, we're, we're no longer a neighborhood school district. You know, that's it is what it is. I'm putting myself out there saying that, but that's the truth. If you're taking kids from Warren and Schaefer to, to Smith, then kids from, you know, here, you know, on the other side of town, that's, that's one away. Go back about seven, eight years, maybe nine, the discussion happened. Do we need to outsource transportation? And that discussion didn't last too long, okay? But when I'm looking at the numbers here, with all due respect, you're doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
And your bus drivers are unbelievable. I'm on the road all day long, I'm a realtor, I, I'm driving up and down Ford Road, Michigan Avenue. I'm, I'm proud to see the bus drivers. The buses are clean, they follow the law, there's no disrespect here. I'm just looking at this report right here. So when we, I first started looking at this, our Trinity cost was just a little bit over a million dollars. We're about twenty-five percent of our budget going out to Trinity. We're at sixty percent now. And it didn't happen overnight, it slowly went up there. Last year, it jumped six hundred thousand dollars. That, I'm like, wow, I'm blown away here. Again, with all due respect, thinking outside the box, there's nothing in here outside the box. I mean, none of these ideas are like, wow, I can't believe this. Banners, yard signs, advertising, I drive from ninety-four, from Inverbit to Dearborn, I see two billboards advertising for bus drivers. If, if, if that's what it is, then we need to figure out. I'm sure we have enough, a lot of intelligent people in this district to figure out a way to get bus drivers. We have to get very, very creative. But if we're just going to keep blaming it on bus drivers, bus drivers, bus drivers, and we go up sixty percent in eight years, there's something wrong with that formula, okay? So now it's on the table, it's our responsibility to keep an eye on it. Our Trinity, they're not uni- unized. They're for, for-profit.
Correct.
Company. I mean.
Right.
They're hiring people at minimum wage. The discussion that we had, trustee Lane, trustee Petrokov and I a few years back was, I really, you don't want to cut off somebody from their income, but I don't want those bus drivers driving our buses, driving our kids around. The other, what, what's left of our own drivers, the forty percent, those are our neighbors. We know them by first name. Michelle, Robert, we, we know them, okay? They know the kids, they know the parents of the kids. You can't guarantee that route from, you know, the Maple School kids, the stout. You can't guarantee tomorrow who's going to show up on that bus, can you? You don't have that. I'm just, I'm, I, I know you can't guarantee it. It's scary. It's scary, and.
Yeah. No disrespect taken. I appreciate your thoughts and your comments.
This is real, and now it's, the report's here, now it's on us what we want to do with it. And I think this is a discussion with the superintendent that, once you go from one million to one point three, one point four, one point eight, one point nine, to almost two point five, to me, that's outsourcing. Let's call it what it is. Let's call it what it is.
It is. It's slowly outsourcing is what it is.
Thank you very much. This is a good report, eye-opener, and.
There's one thing I could add for, add for trust, one thing that I, I would like to talk or add about buying the smaller buses that I should have added earlier. Another part of that goes in that decision-making is the safety of those smaller buses. The bigger buses, they're, they're a lot, they're much safer.
And I've saw, I've seen reports on those.
Yeah.
Once they involve an accident, yeah.
Trustee, Lane.
I did want to ask, are, are bus drivers, do they contribute to the MIPSR system?
Some of them do, but back in two, and, and Tom might be able to answer that a little bit better than I would. You're talking about the retirement?
Right, the retirement system.
Yes, they all contribute. Now, the plan has changed considerably over the years, so their, their value of that retirement plan is much lower to their benefit than it is for older employees that have been in the system for a while. Everybody still contributes, and a district still contributes that percentage.
That is something that's very valuable. I don't know whether people see that or not, because maybe they're thinking shorter term, but with the number of nonprofits, of corporations, so many places that have gone out of business and people are left high and dry with no retirement, the MIPSR system will probably be in effect for a long time, and it's a secure retirement. So like having a big district, there are certain benefits of size that we should be marketing ourselves as much as we can. that we should be marketing ourselves as much as we can.
Just mention that, um, some of the ideas that was mentioned about full hours and things like that, we're gonna continue with those discussions for sure. And, you know, we have to work with the union on that, um, but we also, um, will keep this on the cabinet agenda. I know a few years ago, we had a report on this, and finding ways that we can enhance, you know, for more drivers, more routes. And I'll also talk to some of my colleagues' superintendents, um, on some of the things that they may be doing, or Mark may reach out to other directors, so we'll keep it on the agenda, appreciate it.
I do believe Mrs. Ali Vazey did something in board briefs. She did a survey, so I think you've got those in board briefs.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.